Okay.
I'd like to call the Planning Commission to order at 6:16.
Heather, do you want to roll? I know he doesn't have a visual, so it's probably pretty tough.
Yeah. So we'll, Mr. Chair, we'll just do roll call at this point to identify who is here tonight.
All right, roll call. Cal Patel, absent. Mark Collins, present. Commissioner Hank?
Present.
Commissioner Stephanie?
Present.
Commissioner Angelina is not on as this time, correct?
Correct.
Are you with the pledge of allegiance next?
Yes, absolutely.
All right. Zach, do you have that music? I'm assuming.
Um, I believe we're back to one person is leading.
All right. I'll do this. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the Republic.
Which stands.
One nation, indivisible, serviteet, and justice for all.
Next is approval of the agenda.
Somebody like to make a motion on the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Zach, Angelina is now coming in. Apologies for the interruption.
No worries. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Next is approval of the minutes.
Can somebody make a motion to approve the minutes from last meeting?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Next is a public comment, but we do not have any members of the public by telephone or on our Zoom.
Okay.
And then the next.
I know Cal.
Okay.
No, I was just gonna say, I know Cal would normally leave that open for a minute or so. Do we want to do that or just move to the next item?
Um, I mean, you can, but there's, there's no one in the Zoom call besides staff and the plan and the commissioners.
Okay. I apologize so much for not being able to see what's on the screen right now.
Oh, you're doing great. All right. It is presentations, and that is the 2022 Comprehensive Plan, Public Engagement Plan. And Zach, can you pull up the flyer from the packet and I'll just go over it verbally for everyone? So most importantly is, we have kicked off the new comprehensive plan. It is a plan that we've had a working title of the 2022 Comprehensive Plan, but we are now looking at it as Vision 2042. So that is the year that it goes out to, which is 20 years out into the future. A part of the process of comprehensive plan is to set some guiding light or vision for a plan. And the reason that we are doing this plan so quickly on the heels of adopting our mandatory state plan, which is called a periodic update, is because of the rapid growth in our community. And the goal is to see how the community may see, may see, or want for us to change our approach to things like land use, transportation, recreation, based on this growth and how the community may see that changing the future of Airway Heights. And as you recall, we did hire a Big Sky Public Relations firm to help us develop a robust public engagement plan that would be continuous throughout the process of the plan development. This is the first part, which is a kickoff to talk about that vision. This flyer, or very similar materials, were mailed to every single door in Airway Heights with these dates and this information. There are also signs put out into yards. There were flyers hand-delivered out into the community. This information was posted on the city's Facebook as well as other Facebook groups, and was also put out onto the city's website and a new website that our consultants stood up for us just to contain the information all around the comprehensive plan, which we'll talk about in just a minute. So this visioning, working with the consultants, with the limitations of COVID, which is, you know, masks and social distancing and the concern over whether we would actually attract people into an indoor setting for a meeting. We're looking to go where people actually at. And so this is going to be Zoom that will feed live onto Facebook through, not only the city's Facebook, but through the Airway Heights Community and News Facebook group. They've given us permission to do that. They have about 3,000 followers on that Facebook group. And so this idea of kind of taking the message and the information to where people are already at and where it's convenient for them is the theme that we're going forward with. You know, I will mention that we are also trying to do in-person meetings as well as the opportunities present themselves. And I'll talk about that in just a moment with regards to what we did last weekend at the Airway Heights Days. But moving forward, there will be a series of events. We just had the intro, which was why are we doing this, you know, how to be engaged in the comprehensive plan. And the following meetings in October will all be topics that we hope will attract people to the meetings because of their interests. If you're interested in housing, you're interested in business, you're interested in recreation or art, you're interested in infrastructure, or you want to talk about the city itself. There is a topic and a meeting night for that. We did purposely choose evenings to make it easier for people to attend these events. And there will be sometimes just a couple of people, sometimes there'll be panel. There will always be city staff or consultants there, which would be Amy Aiello with Big Sky Public Relations, and Jeff Arango with Frameworks, who you get to know him very well over the next nine months or so. But we're also bringing in some additional panelists based on the topic to answer some questions and hear what the public is interested in having us investigate as we look at framing the vision for a new comprehensive plan for the city. So I'm going to pause there for a moment and see if there are any questions from the commission on the plan, why we're doing a public engagement strategy. This for best early on, or any of the events that we have coming up on these dates.
I think it's great.
Awesome. So I wanted to just see, are there any other questions? Mark, did you have any questions since you're on the phone?
No, I'm in agreement with Hank.
We're super, super excited about it. We had a great turnout already on the intro, which was an hour. And we'll be posting the videos of those meetings onto the social media accounts and onto that Facebook site for the City of Airway Heights on our webpage that the consultant has built for us. Now, on this flyer, as well as all the materials that were sent out, that new Facebook location is actually listed here. And it's www.cawh, which is City of Airway Heights, com-plan.com. And that website includes not only these events, but contact information for Amy on the project. We'll also have an ongoing survey that's available for the public. So it's this kind of intro, how do you feel about Airway Heights? How long have you lived here? You know, what are you most concerned about? We'll have that open all through the month of October. And we will be listing other surveys and other tools for people to be engaged through this single consolidated website. So it becomes this touch point throughout the process, and these materials will keep being posted so people can go back to these items if they want to familiarize themselves with other activities they've done or look for future opportunities to be engaged. Let's see, and I see that Zach's putting that in the chat as well for everybody. So always has, always have contact information for Amy, all the website, the Facebook information, the dates, the links so that people can participate by telephone. They can come in by Zoom through their own computer, or they can come in through Facebook. So we're trying to make it as easy as possible for, for anybody without limitations on resources in order to be able to participate in these events. So as I mentioned, we're going to try as we can during COVID-19 to do some opportunities for face-to-face engagement. So we did have the opportunity to have a table over Airway Heights Days on Saturday. And if you can, let me share, Zach, I will bring up the summary. Yep, you've got it. Perfect. You're awesome. So this is just a recap of what happened on that day. So this was the opportunity was advertised as well, that if they wanted to speak with someone one-on-one, they wanted to get a physical copy of the survey. They wanted to learn more about the project. There were people there all day long that they could talk to about the project. So turnout was really great. I heard similar to other years, which is great in COVID, to have that kind of turnout at the park. People probably felt more comfortable being outside. There were activities for kids and adults. Not just the classic cars, but there's a beer garden and the pumpkin races, I think, were going on, and a bouncy castle for the kids. So there were about 55 people that came by the table. At least 40 of them stopped to talk with someone. They added sticky notes to a map indicating what they were concerned about, what they had interests in. They had the opportunity to be handed physically a copy of the survey so that they could complete that. Can you go back up just a little bit, Zach, on the page? And I'm just going to read this out for Mark since he's by phone. So here were some questions that were asked and feedback that was received. What was your favorite thing about Airway Heights? People love the rec center. They love the Airway Heights Days. They love the people in this community. They love that the neighborhoods are quiet. They love the school. Good things are the best things. They love the park and the library. When they were asked what they'd like to see most improved, there's a wide variety of responses. People want to see a parade in the community. Several people talked about more sidewalks, and that actually is a topic that we're going to hit on under the Transportation Chapter on the visioning, and we're going to follow up with another survey about walking in the community. I'm setting up a meeting with our Transportation Consultant to get that kicked off at the end of this month. Some people said that they wanted to see high schools. So they wanted to see a middle school. Several people said that they wanted to see LGBTQ representation at events. They wanted to see teen-centered spaces and events, increased COVID compliance, speed monitoring on King Street, which we're very familiar with after our demonstration project on, on King Street earlier this year with the Smart Growth America Grant. Private school, K through 12, plowing on sidewalks, an outdoor pool, park, market, or yard sale, paving on the south side of US2, which, which Mark, I think, is very close to his heart. Stoplight, stoplight sequence changes at Lawson in US2, a sports complex with a variety of activities, soccer, hockey, lacrosse, football, monthly activities, connecting Hazelwood to Deer Heights and paving 21st Avenue. So kind of that paving on the south side was repeated a couple of different times. So 35 people provided comments. Forty people actually stopped and spoke with the, those at the table. But there were about a total of 55 visitors to that area. So I think that's a great turnout for an event like this to have that many people pass through in a day at a table and, you know, stop and talk. So just wanted to give you a quick update. I think that our consultants are doing a great job on getting the word out, and so we're looking forward to these engagement events. So any questions about the first part, which is visioning, and I can do a little verbal framework for what would be next after this?
No.
Okay, great. So following these visioning activities in the month of October, our consultants, which are Jeff Arango with Framework and Amy Aiello with Big Sky Public Relations, will come back and say, here's all of the feedback, and this is what it's sounding like, the community's vision is. And it could be, it could be a simple vision statement, or it could be a framework that, that was identified by the community to work within. So like these comments where people may have touched on recreation, transportation, the public facilities like the library and public services like plowing. They could create a framework that would lead additional areas that we would be working on developing for the actual comprehensive plans. The comprehensive plan is made of multiple chapters, economic development, land use, transportation, housing. And so the vision could provide this guiding light for each of these chapters. And these would be areas that we would work toward answering and addressing or including in the chapters as well as being an overarching vision for the plan. And I think it's great guidance for us and the various consultants we have working on this plan. So just a reminder, we have Transportation Consultants working on this. We've got a consultant working with our Public Works Department on our water sewer. We have another consultant working with our public service providers like police, fire, and corps, looking at demands and needs. We have a consultant helping us with the land use and housing chapter. And of course, we have the Economic Development Chapter that we have. So a lot of work will begin on developing answers to some of those questions, or more importantly, potentially alternatives. And so the goal will probably to be bringing back some alternatives, because there's more than one way to, to address a problem or an issue for a community and get that feedback. And then we'll end up with draft chapters, which will be bringing back to the Planning Commission, probably not until after the first of the year, probably January timeframe. And from there, we'll be getting more feedback from the public and the Planning Commission, and then the consultants will be creating essentially a draft, a final draft that will take through the final steps of engagement with the public and through a city council process. So the goal would be by early summer to have that plan done and adopted. There are some important things that we'll be looking at. So for example, at the intro, we had some really great questions. For example, Vu Dong, I believe, who owns the beauty school, was participating, and he wants to know how we're going to get to the rec center. The only way you can get to the rec center today is to drive. So how are we going to get there if people wanted to walk or bike safely? So, you know, that's the type of things where, you know, if the vision is a connected community, we need to look at how we would try to work toward that outcome. So that would be summary of where we're going over the next couple of months with regards to the com-plan. Any questions?
No.
I'll have to give you my address because I never got any of the stuff in the mail.
Um, it's, yeah, you have to give it to us, Angelina, because it's actually generated by the postal service.
Oh. This is really great, though. Everything that you've done that led up to today. I think it's amazing.
Awesome. Well, thank you, Angelina. Yeah, please do give us your address because we go through a mailing service and they get their addresses from the postal office. So it allows for any physical address in any PO box to be pulled out as a distribution list for the postcards.
Yeah, okay. I'm surprised no one mentioned a new police station, you know, because our police station really needs to be upgraded and expanded.
That's a, that's a really good point. The, um, that, so the, I can't scroll down because I don't have control of the.
The 28th.
It's the 28th. I couldn't see the date. So that, October 28th will be the topic about city buildings and city facilities.
Okay.
Angelina, that would be a great one to participate. I'd love to see all the planning commission members at, at least one of these, one that's near and dear to your heart.
Yes, I want to go. I definitely want to go to that one.
So.
Heather, I know I'll go to as many events as I can.
Oh, that'd be awesome, Mark. We'd really appreciate it. It, there's three in one week, which is week after next, starting on the 19th. So you know where Zach and I will be every night, based on this, based on the schedule. Then it skips over to the next week, and there are three more sessions. So they're all Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursdays to avoid city councils on Monday. And, you know, Friday, you know, people want to do something fun. They probably don't want to talk about the problems.
And Heather, that's next week, not the week after next.
That's next week? Oh, my gosh. Okay, time's flying.
Yeah.
Well, I'll have to do the ones not next week, the week after.
Okay.
Could I get up with you offline for that, Heather?
Okay. Yeah, totally. Absolutely. And if you hear of anybody who didn't get this information, please let us know. There will also be a MailChimp flyer going out to anyone that we have an email address for. So that includes anyone who has left their email account as part of their business license or their utility account. We do send flyers out to them as well. So it is a whole lot of different ways that we try to do outreach into the community. And we also have to follow up with Amy Aiello, but we tried to connect her with the representative of Community Frameworks who's been working in the mobile home parks as part of the APC relocation project to make sure that those residents as well got copies of the flyers and heard about these events that they'll be able to be engaged. So really trying to make sure that, that we're reaching out to as many people as possible.
Nice.
Well, that concludes just the presentation. It was just to bring you up to date and make sure you had the opportunity to hear about this. And, and of course, Zach concluded the branding, so you'll see that same logo and, and colors in all the materials. So it's, you know, easily recognizable when people see notices and other communication that it's the same, it's the same project that they're hearing about and seeing. So it's going to provide some consistency as well. So with that, Mr. Chair, the next item is a public hearing, and we do not have any public hearings scheduled for tonight.
Okay.
The next item on the agenda are action items, and there are no action items for this evening. Item 11 is workshops. We do not have any workshops for this evening. And item number 12 are commissioner reports.
Okay. I just want to say, the city getting that award is an awesome thing. Very proud of all the work we did. Everybody on this commission, to good hack and Zach and Heather, very proud of everything there. I'm sure the city is very proud of that. And I also want to just, over the past, you know, what, two weeks, three weeks, we've had that construction going on over there by Hayford and Two. I really enjoyed how that was done. You know, it was quick, fast, and there didn't seem to be any major incidents. And I thought that was going to be a lot more intrusive on people's lives. So just want to say, I'm very proud of everything that's going on in the city with all these different changes that are going on. Any other commissioners have any other reports?
No.
What is our next line item then, Heather?
It's staff reports. And with that, I will have Zach go first.
Okay. Well, first, uh, next meeting is next, is on November 10th. So we'll just get that, the one formal one out of the way. Just building off, you know, Heather's report, I did get an opportunity to go down to Airway Heights Day and, and man the, man the table for a while and, and talk to probably, I don't know, five or six different, you know, sets of people. It was really cool to be outside. It was really cool to be talking to people. And, and it really felt like an opportunity because sometimes when we interact with people, we, we talk to the same group of people who have the same issues kind of over and over and over again. And there were a handful of people that, you know, I just inherently could tell, I've never interacted with them. Their problems were something I've never heard of, specifically talking about like snowplow removal. I did talk to the gentleman recommending the sports complex, stuff like that. It was kind of, you know, everyone has their own concerns. Some were really good, though. And I think homing in on that, that connection piece for the city center to the rec center is something that's going to be really, really important for a lot of people that live in the city. And I totally agree. And, and whether it's, you know, a trail, I mean, we could look at other options in terms of shuttles. I mean, there's all sorts of stuff we can do. And I think that that's something I, I'd really like to see us try and tackle with this, this com-plan process. But it was a really great event. Everyone seemed to be having fun. And again, it was really nice to talk to people. The Smart City Award is great. It's something that a lot of people put a lot of hard work in. A lot of people in this commission did work in, the city council. Heather, our friends over at SCJ, it is a really big deal. And it's, it's a really great thing for the city initially, but it also, you know, helped us with going after grant money. So it's something that, like, you look at it, oh, it's great, but it extends further than that because it's something that's really going to help the community down the line. So just want to touch on that. A couple of current projects. I will be doing a conditional use permit hearing coming up for a private school going in at the Baptist Church. It's essentially, it's a homeschool kind of center. So that's coming in. I kind of finishing on my review of that. It's not my decision. Obviously, it's for the, the hearings examiner, but it looks like it'll be a really cool addition to our community. Industrial, we have metals fab. They're expanding down on the south side. So those are two big projects we've done. I think this is my, and I have one I haven't even touched yet, but I think this is six projects that required major environmental review over the summer. So we've had a lot of development. We have a lot of big projects going in. The city's growing, and it's great. Speaking of the city growing, we did get notice from the Office of Financial Management, who essentially their job is to, well, they do, amongst other things, they do accurate projections of growth for cities and municipalities in Washington State based on houses development, stuff like that. So we added, I think, 157 houses last year, and we got our initial population projections, and they weren't very big. The mayor wasn't, he was kind of bummed out because he didn't see the, the correlation there. But we actually got an update on that last week based on the new census numbers coming out. And we actually got a, a population growth of about 750 extra people. So the city is still growing. That doesn't, may not sound like a lot, but if you think the city's about 10,000 people. So that's like a 10, you know, right around 8%, something like that. So it is a lot in the context of Airway Heights. The last thing is I'm working on a fairly significant upgrade to the GIS system. TBD on release for that. There's a lot of things going into it. But the idea is to essentially make it more useful for people that are interested in the city, but also potential developers coming in. It's going to be an integrated system. It's something where everything is going to be found in one place as opposed to where it is now, where we have separate maps. It's going to be one map with everything in it, so you can overlay everything and take a, a good look. And it's going to hopefully be easier to navigate and just have expanded uses. So I'm really looking forward to it. That being said, still got a long way to go. We'll definitely bring it to you guys to, you know, take a, take a test drive before we release it to the public just because, you know, feedback's gold for stuff like this. So look out for that. But with that, I will let Heather give her report. So thanks, guys.
Thanks, Zach.
Thank you very much, Zach.
Thank you, Zach.
Great report. And thank you very much for.
Thank you.
For all the support around the, the award. We're really excited about it. For um all the support around the the award. We're really excited about it. So. Um as we mentioned a little bit earlier, um the city will be officially presented that award from the governor. Um it is already bearing, I think, some positive results for Airway Heights. Um we were contacted by Spokane Transit Authority. The board for the Spokane Transit Authority has some uncommitted capital dollars that they need to spend in the next two years. And they've reached out to Airway Heights uh because of the downtown plan and they wanna invest in our downtown. So they're offering to help partner. With some funding to improve transit uh in the downtown areas. We're having discussions with them about a proposal back to the S T A boards. That's just an example of. How something like this um can bring energy um toward implementation, which is always an important piece. But we don't plan just to make plans and put them on a shelf. Um we we do it so that we have a guide for investment. And the strategies that we utilize uh in order to make it a reality uh for a downtown plan or industrial plan. We also are on the cusp of uh being nominated for. A grant from the Transportation Improvement Board to design the first two blocks between Lawson and Lundstrom. Of downtown that would include thirteenth and fourteenth, which are the streets on the north and the south side of US two, looking specifically at multimobility. So. Sidewalk improvements, bike lanes, crossing enhancements uh for that. And the money, if if we were given that award, it would be next year in twenty twenty two. And we would go through a community engagement process to look at overall bike and walking strategies from Hayford to Craig. And we'd actually design that two block area between Lawson and Lundstrom and we we have a little bit of money, hopefully, to do some construction. On either thirteenth or fourteenth, which is on the north or south part. Um but the goal would be to help build ourselves for the next grant, which would probably be a federal grant that we would apply for. Um the downtown project area that we're looking at, the total cost of construction is between ten and twelve million dollars. So. Even the little bit that we may see from from S T A, and I don't mean anyway that it's a little bit of money. I mean, it could be a lot of money, but when we look at the big. Twelve million dollars, you know, it takes a lot to build roadway improvements. So we're we're excited. Washington State Department of Transportation is gonna nominate us. It's the only way to get that on that grant list. Um and and when I spoke to him week before last, Airway Heights was the only community in eastern Washington that they were nominating for that grant. So. Pretty excited um about that. So we'll see uh how that uh progresses. So we've talked a lot about the comp plan. Um as planners, we're always looking ahead, cause that's what we do. So Zach and I are already beginning to look at twenty twenty two. And look at the work we'll be doing after the comp plan, which is that we're gonna rewrite uh all of the zoning code and the administrative code. So um buckle down, it's gonna be really busy two years uh as we get those. Those plans and documents before you. So we'll have a comp plan. We'll end up doing a a major rezoning action along with a brand new uh zoning code for the city. So um things that we're gonna look at uh are gonna be like landscaping, you know, working at. More native plants, more zeroscaping, more water conservation. Um timed into uh stormwater management. We're gonna be looking at housing product um and looking at. What we might be able to do here in the city. So that's a major undertaking that we'll be working on next. And then we continue to support a lot of other implementation projects. So um for Mark and uh perhaps Angelina, remember, we recently adopted an industrial severie plan. Um the city's been actively asking the legislature for funding. To help build the infrastructure for that industrial plan. So money to put in water sewer extensions. Uh as well as roadway projects. So we can build the infrastructure that would help attract more industrial. And you know, as we got a comment from from the Airway Heights Days, you know, pave those darn roads south of US two. Um and then on current planning, uh we do have a major project that will be coming to the plan commission. Probably in November, um December at the very latest, and that is. Uh we have almost complete application for a a new subdivision called Sunset at Hunter's Crossing. And it would be a proposal to subdivide the last of the residential property in the northwest portion of the city. So it'll probably be somewhere in the realm of about two hundred and forty lots. Of single family and duplex housing. So um the process at the City of Airway Heights is those applications are considered by the plan commission. And then the decision is rendered on the preliminary plot by the city council. So we'll do a a session. Probably next month uh with the plan commission, since so many new members about how to do. A application review, what decision criteria that there are and how to evaluate a project and make a recommendation to city council. So no fears, but it'll it'll be um. A fairly technical project, because it will include having to do transportation, water, and sewer improvements along with it. As it moves forward. So those are just uh some of the things that we're working on right now. Uh but um unfortunately, we we're not gonna be able to um have a light agenda, I think. In the next meeting, though, um I wanna put this out there, which is um. To see whether the plan commission does wanna meet in December. We did meet last year. Uh but sometimes commissions and councils choose not to meet in the in the month of December because of the holidays. So. Don't have to make a decision now, but just kinda put it out there for y'all to think about.
I I'm open to talking about it tonight.
Okay.
I mean, we already, we had what, one off over the summer? Um and then we just had the one last month we took off. And talking about all the stuff you have coming up, I personally would rather have a December meeting, so we're not going into January, February with a ton of stuff on the plate.
Think that that makes sense?
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, well, thanks for discussing it. Uh as Mark could probably tell you from last year. Things can really stack up and they're and, you know, we've had some two and three hour meetings. Uh because there was so much to go through uh for the commission. So I appreciate your dedication. Uh during the holidays to meet, so we can continue to do business.
No, no problem.
Well, with that, uh that concludes the staff reports, unless there are some specific questions from the commission about one of those topics.
I don't have anything, Heather.
Okay, so then the final item on the agenda would be adjournment, Mark.
All right, let's call this uh meeting adjourned at six fifty four P M.
Well, thank you so much, Mark, for sticking it out with us. I I appreciate. Being in transit, trying to conduct a meeting and chair at the same time. You're 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 a champion. Thank you.
He's a multitasker.
Like, you know, hopefully, uh hopefully we got through it. I apologize for any inaccuracies, mistakes in there.
Oh, no, not all. You did great. Well, thank you, everybody, for coming and we will see you next time.
Okay.
Have a good evening. Have a good night.
Thank you much. Okay, bye.